Good morning, we will start. I'm councillor Pete Marland and I'm Chair of the South Midlands Authorities Board. We are not expecting fire alarms this evening, but in the event of alarm sounding during the meeting, you must evacuate the building immediately. You'll be assisted to the nearest designated assembly point where it's safe to do so. A supply of today's papers is available on the mod.gov pages of the Milton Keynes Council, City Council website. And for a reminder for all those present at the board meeting today, that the meeting is being recorded but is not being livestreamed, so will be placed on the MK City Council YouTube channel when appropriate. Okay, moving on to item one of the agenda, which is welcome introductions and apologies. I have apologies from councillor Adam Zerny and Adele, but we have some substitutes. And because we've got some substitutes, I propose that we'll go around and for the millionth time introduce ourselves. I'll introduce me, we'll go to you Jim first.
Yeah, Jim, we are Deputy Mayor Bedford Borough Council.
Jason Longhurst, Chair of the South Midlands Business Board.
Anna Earnshaw, Chief Exec of West Northants Council.
Councillor Mark Arnold, Leader of West Northamptonshire Council.
Vicky Lamuka, Head of Economic Growth, West Northants Council.
Hazel Simmons, Leader of Luton Council.
Good morning, Shneh Mcnamara, Director of Increase of Economy at Luton Council.
Good morning, Graham Kane, Assistant Director, Highways Waste and Growth at North Northamptonshire.
Councillor Martin Greath, Leader of North Northamptonshire Council.
Good morning, Andrew Davie, Service Director at Central Beverley Council.
Good morning, my name is John Baker, I'm the Cabinet Member for Finance and deputising for the leader Adam Zerny of Central Beverley Council.
I'm Sophie Lloyd, I'm the Head of Economic Development at Milton Keynes City Council.
Paul Thomas, Director of Planning and Placemaking at Milton Keynes City Council.
And I'm Michael Bassey, Chief Exec at Milton Keynes City Council.
Ross Tidman, Committee Services Manager.
Because we're very important, we get a microphone each. Welcome to Graham and Andrew, and we've also had the dubious pleasure of meeting John before, many times. So move on to item two, which is the minutes. Are you happy for me to sign the minutes of the meeting of the 24th of June 2025? I will take silence as agreement. Do I have any dissent? Super, moving on to item three, disclosure of interest. Do any members of the board or officers present have any disclosures of interest that they have not already declared on their declaration of interests? No, moving on to item four, Connect to Work Programme update, Vicky.
Thank you Chair. So this is just to bring an update on Connect to Work, which we've discussed previously at this board meeting. So just for a reminder and summary, Connect to Work is a Department for Work and Pensions funded programme, five years between now and March 2030, aimed at supporting people back into employment and providing supported employment to those who have complex barriers to getting into work and finding work. The programme aims to support 100,000 people nationally and hopefully over the lifetime of the programme in the South Midlands, it will support over 8,000 people back into work. So just to give an update on recent activity of the programme, for several months now, we've had a programme team of officers across the local authorities in the South Midlands working together to put together a delivery plan for the programme and starting to sort of prepare for the launch of the programme. I'm delighted to say that at the end of last week, we heard from DWP that our delivery plan has now been through the approval panel. We're just waiting for the final sign off of the delivery plan, which is great news and testament to all the hard work of the officers across the programme team. We've also now sent out sort of finalised back to back agreements to each local authority so that when we receive the grant funding agreement from DWP, we hopefully will all be in a position to sort of sign up to the programme and prepare for launch. We have had lots of support also from both of the Integrated Care Boards across the South Midlands, particularly helping because the sort of integration with health is an important aspect of the programme. So thanks to our colleagues in the ICB for their support in the development of the programme. And on Friday and Saturday this week, as a sort of part of a soft launch for the programme, we'll be here in Milton Keynes, over the road at the shopping centre for a regional jobs fair event where hopefully we've got sort of several members of the programme team coming to talk to sort of job seekers about the support the programme offers and also talking to employers at the jobs fair and encouraging them to get involved. So the only sort of recommendation to sort of bring to the board this morning is that as part of the development of the delivery plan and putting together the back to back agreements, one of the things that is recommended in the back to back agreement is that in the very unlikely event that the DWP funding isn't sufficient to cover all costs and sort of particularly thinking about closure costs as we sort of think towards the end of the programme, that we sort of link the programme back to the South Midlands contingency reserve as we have with the other South Midland services such as the Growth Hub and the Careers Hub. So that in that unlikely event that the DWP funding can't sort of cover all costs, that we would then sort of look to that contingency reserve to make up any difference. And just for clarity, that contingency reserve currently sits at 3.5 million pounds. Thank you Chair.
Good, and just from talking to Vicky when we had our pre-meet with Jim, obviously any council and 151 officer would want that contingency reserve to be in place because obviously West Northamptonshire employ those people on our behalf but shouldn't necessarily have to face the costs if those people end up being made redundant, as most of the staff also carried forward from the old SEMLAP as well, didn't they? Any comments, questions? Super, John?
Thanks, so I've just got a couple of queries. What is the total amount of government funding to fund this programme? And you obviously made reference to potential use of the reserves. Why, what eventualities would you see of needing to dig into the reserves if you've got a government funding guaranteed and B a clearer cost of programme?
So 32 million pounds is the total cost of the funding, so it's over a five year period. So we don't envisage there being many scenarios where we would have to utilise those reserves. I think the only two eventualities would be in the very, very unlikely event that there was any activity that DWP deemed to be ineligible for the funding, which hopefully wouldn't happen because there's many provisions in place to prevent that in terms of, you know, compliance checks and sort of working very closely with DWP. The only other one would be at the point of closure if we were in a situation where the sort of any closure costs couldn't be covered. So for example, with redundancy, it's very difficult five years ahead of time to sort of forecast and predict because we haven't actually recruited the permanent programme team as yet. So it's difficult to know things like what the pension strain may or may not be for any sort of future employees on that programme. Although there is some provision in the programme from the DWP funding for that, this is just a sort of a backup for the sort of unlikely event that that wouldn't fully cover those closure costs.
Remember that. A lot of these packages are also now generally aimed at 50% of the population where there is a funded combined authority and the government would expect those to be employed people from the combined authority. And if there was any redundancy made, the combined authority would pick up the cost as opposed to, as opposed to an authority that is acting as the, essentially the guarantor, but it's the real responsible authority at the end of the day, aren't you? So I think there's some of that to play in as well. And the fact that this is revenue funding for a revenue service but doesn't necessarily fund how you deliver it, isn't necessarily through paid employment. We could, we could have gone to marketing and delivered it through Reed or an agency like that, couldn't we? But we chose to do this. John?
Just one follow up question, thank you for the informative feedback. So I think you've mentioned 32 million pounds over five years and I think you aim to support 8,000 people, is it 8,000 a year or is it 8,000 over the period of the five years? Obviously 32 million is quite a lot of money, so what would we expect to see in terms of reporting, regular reporting on success rates? So where do we, how can we measure the performance of this service? I wouldn't want to get to the end of year two and find that it hasn't really helped very many people. So can you help us with a bit more information on that please?
Yeah, absolutely. So it is 8,000 people over the lifetime of the programme and within that there are proportions within each of the local authority areas as well, which has been prescribed to us by DWP. We will be required to report to DWP on a very regular basis, so put it in sort of quarterly claims and DWP are monitoring this programme as you'd expect with government funding very closely. So what we've sort of suggested is that as with other South Midland services that we bring regular updates to this meeting, there are very clear outputs and outcomes for the programme. So of, you know, the aim is to support people back into work, but some of the key outputs are that 50% of those who we support receive at least a first earnings on the programme. So and then of that sort of a smaller number then go on to sort of, you know, receive, you know, sort of work over a sort of longer period of time. So there are really clearly defined outcomes and our plan is to provide regular updates to this meeting in terms of how we're performing against those. But DWP work really closely with us as a programme team to ensure that we're hopefully on track to meet those. And we've got a really healthy pipeline of sort of potential participants for the programme who are already sort of keen to join. So that hopefully means a positive start for the programme.
Graham and then I've got Jim.
Thanks so much Chair, and thank you Vicky for the paper, appreciate it. Just to say that North Northamptonshire are very supportive of this, particularly because we have the most to gain, if you like, we've got the highest level of target output in North Northamptonshire. So we're keen to get going. On that point of delivery, we've got a very successful employment and disability service who have run similar programmes in the past and they are ready to go and ready to deliver and we're looking forward to doing so. So we're confident that we'll be able to certainly deliver in our area. And I'm pleased to hear that the Milton Keynes Jobs Fair event is this weekend. We have jobs fairs in Corby at the end of this month and Kettering at the beginning of next month where we certainly want to start promoting this. So it sounds like that will be possible if it's being launched this weekend. We can certainly start to push it out to our communities very soon as well, which is great news. Thank you.
Jim, then Martin.
Thanks Chair, Vicky, thanks for your report. I just picked up in the report about the specialist ICB consultancy person that we've employed or taken on board. Working across two ICBs is always going to be difficult. Have you got any indication about how that started off? Has it started off well? Is it, is it positive?
Yeah, thanks Jim, yes, it is positive. So the individual who we're working with was formerly at the BLMK ICB, so has a really good understanding of sort of the health picture in BLMK. She's been with us now for about three months and has made sort of phenomenal inroads within the Northants ICB as well. And I think we really benefit that she's got that strong health background because she's sort of really built partnerships. I think one of the key things with this programme is integration. So part of the model is about integrating that employment support. So if someone's facing health barriers, that you work really closely with sort of the health, you know, the health teams and health colleagues who are supporting that individual. So she's really made some inroads with sort of primary care and other teams across both ICBs and so far it seems to be working quite well. And she's taking learning from the work she's done in BLMK and sort of applying that to the Northants area as well. Thanks Chair.
You, Martin?
Yeah, thanks Chair, and just following on from Graham's comments about the job fairs, we recently recognised, think about this, two guys that have been with North Northamptonshire or its predecessors for 50 years each, absolutely amazing. But on the other hand, we've also taken on a number of apprentices, both in our housing and planning teams. And I'd like to put on record our thanks to Tresham who have helped us enormously with that in the last couple of years. So thanks Chairman.
Thank you, can't see anybody else, oh, Michael?
Thanks Pete. Vicky, in relation to the person from the health background, I, we've had some interesting learning in BLMK, working on children who've got complex trauma in their background, who are a priority for us. And we've made a lot of progress through looking at the clinical, you know, ensuring those children have got the right clinical support in place. And with this project as it develops, it would be interesting to pilot how many people with complex disabilities or illness we might be able to help through challenging the care, the medication they're receiving, the therapies they're receiving, as well as just bringing people together in partnership, which is fine. But what our learning in that is that actually some basic things haven't been done for some children and actually doing those basic things have made a really big breakthrough for them. So with this different group, it'd be interesting to pilot maybe employing someone with a clinical background, a consultant nurse for example, to do some checking to make sure the people who we think really want to get there have got all their clinical formulations are all absolutely right in the background and they're not missing something because, you know, it happens regularly.
Thank you. Any further comments, Vicky, John, some more?
Yeah, and thanks Michael for that comment. I mean, that's exactly the sort of example where, you know, we want this programme to work in terms of integration so that it's not isolated employment support, it's joined up and we're looking at some of those other things. So it's perhaps one of the pilots that we can sort of take on board for the programme. Thanks for all the comments and all the sort of suggestions. We're excited that we've finally got to the stage where the programme is now launching and, you know, I look forward to hopefully bringing an update to a future meeting where we've actually sort of got some participants starting and some case studies to bring in terms of the hopefully positive difference the programme will make. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Okay, is everybody happy to agree that? Recommendation, thank you. Moving on to the Get Britain Working update, Vicky, can you introduce this similar but completely different item please?
Yes, thanks Chair. So it is a similar item in the sense that it is focused also on providing employment support or understanding our working population. So the government published their Get Britain Working White Paper in the autumn last year and that is all focused on reducing economic activity and also increasing employment rates. So their sort of headline statistic is they want to get to an 80% employment rate across the country. As part of that, in the spring, they have asked local regions to produce sort of regional Get Britain Working Plans. So in our case, a South Midlands Get Britain Working Plan. And the main aim of these plans is to really have a collective understanding of the challenges in relation to our local labour market issues, as well as a coordinated approach to how we tackle those issues and identify kind of actions, particularly over the next sort of 12 to 24 months. We've been working together as a, as a sort of partnership of local authorities and other key stakeholders for the best part of three or four months now. DWP have given us 225,000 pounds of funding to support the development of the plan in the local area. And again, similar to the Connect to Work Programme, we are working together closely with both DWP as a key stakeholder, as well as the two ICBs or Integrated Care Boards. Because one of the sort of key aspects is the recognition of that sort of work and health link, good work, sort of good health and vice versa. We have got a sort of part time project manager supporting it, as well as working with an organisation called GC Insight to develop the plan. And we are at the stage at the moment of sort of engagement and sort of consultation. So we've developed a dashboard of all the key labour market information, which is available now on the South Midlands website. There's a link in the paper to that, which gives us all the kind of information and insight to understand our sort of challenges. But what we're now doing is talking to a number of different stakeholders, including sort of residents across the area who've got lived experience of being out of work and what their sort of barriers and challenges are to finding work. We have a partnership group that meet, which includes those sort of key partners, so the authorities, the ICBs and DWP, but also includes representation from further education, from sort of business leadership. So we've got a rep from the South Midlands Business Board on that group as well. And that group met together only last week to sort of look at sort of where we are with the, with the findings so far and start to look at what our priority groups and areas of focus will be for the plan. So 3.8 outlines some of the early findings from the, the plan to date, although, you know, it's still in its early stages of development, but just to sort of highlight a few key ones. So as the South Midlands, our overall employment rate is 77.8%. So it's actually above the national average of 75.5%. But it's worth noting that there are significant variations at local authority and an even more local level when you sort of drill down to local level. So sort of recognising, for example, in Luton that that rate is much lower. And looking at, you know, how do we therefore ensure the plan is sort of relevant to support all areas? There are some areas that we perform less well than the national average. So looking at things like our real disposable household income, which is below national levels, and also our disability employment rate gap is slightly above national levels. So we're starting to look at what are some of the sort of key priority areas, looking at sort of young people, those who have been, you know, sort of long term sick, long term disability as sort of, sort of some of the examples of those areas that we really need to focus on, but also recognising that we really need to understand the business picture here and make sure that what we do aligns with future business need, as well as recognise that business confidence is impacted by wider economic trends when we're trying to sort of get them into engage, particularly with some of these sort of harder to recruit target groups. So I mentioned that we'd been given 225,000 pounds of funding to support the development of the plan and section four of the report sort of outlines sort of what we're sort of spending that funding on. And in terms of next steps, throughout September, we are consulting with local businesses, organisations who work with some of these target groups, as well as residents themselves, with the aim to have a draft plan in circulation by October, to be circulated to yourselves with the hope that we can bring the sort of finalised plan to the November meeting for sign off. And it's worth just noting that the final plan will need to be signed off by, by the local authorities, as well as DWP and both of the Integrated Care Boards. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Thank you again Chair, and thanks very much again. Vicky, we absolutely support your, your report here and what you've just said there. Productivity is key obviously, and that's how it links to the Connect to Work initiative as you've already said. Certainly suboptimal productivity in North Northamptonshire is a concern of ours, of course it is. And we address that in our own economic growth strategy, which we will be tying in with the work that you're proposing here. Certainly in terms of what you say around some areas of lower productivity and sadly beneath the, the national average, unfortunate parts of North Northamptonshire fall into that category. You mentioned Luton but North Northamptonshire as well. So the more we can do to address that and the particular things, we have challenges among long term sickness and also high disability employment gap, which you mentioned. So that link with the health partners is absolutely crucial. Obviously we're doing work on that locally, but the more that we can work collectively on this plan, the better. So we certainly welcome this and will continue to support it. So thank you very much.
Fantastic. You look like you're contemplating talking Jason. Yeah, go on if you want. Again, just want to endorse it and I think the business board's view, again, that public private working and also the confidence element, do not underestimate that at the moment. Again, the support there across the sector groups that we've got, but also pushing this wider, because I think some of the challenges we're seeing, early signs of stress across several sectors. So the more we can actually focus on, you know, both national and local level where we can get skills support, development support is becoming more critical. And I think we're seeing it, working with partners at Luton, North Northants, other areas, we're just, again, that emphasis and we're certainly sounding that out with government is a greater focus on that skills development and access to work opportunities. So I think this is something that really needs harnessing as we go forwards. John, then Martin?
Thank you very much again for all the information you shared. So perhaps it's been discussed at a previous meeting, so as you know, I'm just a stand in essentially for the leader. You come up, you come up with a plan, board agrees it, you send it to DWP, what next? What happens then after you've created your plan and handed it to DWP? What do you expect to happen to, to resolve many longstanding problems that have been in place for decades across communities across the South Midlands? And it wouldn't be fair of me to sit here and not mention Halsom Regis, for example. In Central Beverley, it's a very prosperous area, but we have little pockets, Leyton Buzzard, Flitwick, Halsom Regis, Sandy, there are pockets of unemployment or higher, higher unemployment as you, as you indicate. So you've got your plan, handed to DWP, what do we think's going to happen next to actually solve some of those problems?
Thanks John, I think that is a very good question. And I think one of the things we discussed in the last meeting is that as far as we are aware, there isn't any sort of funding to come to actually implement some of the actions on the back of this plan. However, the aim is that what the plan will produce is a tangible set of actions that we as a partnership and as a collective can commit to, particularly over the sort of shorter term, so over the kind of next, you know, two, three years. Connect to Work will obviously form part of that. DWP keep reminding me of our problem statement, which is the 80% employment rate. And currently that translates to about 23,000 people back into work to sort of achieve it. So, you know, Connect to Work will, if it does what it, what we hope it will, we'll go a long way towards that if we, you know, sort of support 8,000 people. However, absolutely recognise that, you know, some of the challenges we're talking about here are, are challenges that are longstanding and are not easy things to, to solve. I think one of the key emphasis on the, for this plan is about integration and how we work together and join the system together. So a sort of key focus of the work and the, and the plan is sort of mapping that support and looking at how we can all work really effectively together. And I think that's one of the reasons why sort of both the ICBs and DWP are sort of co-signatures on this plan, because, you know, clearly they are, you know, health and sort of the, you know, the job centres and the support that DWP provide are key parts of that. So I think it is a challenge, particularly sort of without sort of additional funding to, to deliver some of these actions. However, you know, hopefully some of it comes from that, one of the sort of key parts of the plan is the partnership and the governance that oversees it and bringing those key partners together. So our sort of, our sort of hope is that that partnership group will continue to oversee the implementation of the plan once the plan is produced, looking at how we sort of join some of those key activities together. You know, there are things like, you know, how we data share across some of those systems that would make life a lot easier. You know, there's some big challenges that we would love to address as part of this plan that would make things a lot easier across that system in terms of how we support people, you know, to sort of Michael's point, you know, if we, if we all had access, you know, using the example that Michael brought, if we all had access to the same sort of systems and data and it was sort of that case management centred around the person rather than almost, you know, the person we're supporting has to tell their story several times to, to different parts of that system, that would, for example, make life a lot easier. But it is, it is going to be a challenge. Thank you.
Martin?
Thank you, and thanks Vicky for the, for the report and following up from Graham. Yeah, we've got a challenge, but you know me well Chair, I'm always a glass half full as opposed to a glass half empty. And I visited Magna Park in Corby the other day. Wow, what an amazing opportunity that is for us. You know, not just the Nike offer, which is a thousand jobs, including high quality jobs, not just warehousing and logistics space. So all sorts, but other potential opportunities there are absolutely staggering. So I just wanted to make a mention of that at this opportunity Chair.
Which these logistics people could call things different names in, in different places. I think we've all got a Magna Park, haven't we? Get right on that Jason. So what's before us, actually just coming back to, to John's point, is that the DWP have received an initial submission. It's more of an iterative process than we write it, we send it to them, they say no or yes. It's, it's built in conjunction with those advisers and, and amongst officers of the individual councils as well. So it's gone to DWP, it'll come back, it's a bit like a local plan, not that you know what that is Jim, a local plan too, yeah, you're really good at them. Iterative, it comes back, it might have some changes, but it won't come back essentially before the next board meeting. It'll come back sometime before the next board meeting. And so we will actually approve the plan at the next board meeting and the final one will be sent out to each of the leaders and chief executives to look over and make any final comments or before. over and make any final comments before the board meeting. And it would be really helpful if you do have any comments that rather than come into the meeting and say, I'd like that comma changed, or this whole entire paragraph taken out, if you could make those before the meeting and we could decide on it at the next informal leaders meeting before we bring it to this meeting for final decision. So are the two recommendations agreed? Thank you. Moving on to the Business Board and Economic Growth Strategy update. Jason?
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully, everyone's seen the paper. I'm not going to go through the detail, but I just want to give a bit of context. So for some of us, it's a busy week because we're getting drawn into a wonderful visit from the US. I'm not one of those looking forward to it. But this week, you're going to see over two hundred billion of investments going into the US and coming into the UK announced both ways. Amazing how close those two figures are. From a business board perspective, we're coming up for a year now of being formed. And part of the key elements there is hearing and seeing what we're seeing on the ground in terms of the economy of the wider region, but also locally. And simply, we're seeing certainly a tightening and a slowing down at the moment. And I think that's reflective nationally. But also, again, we're seeing a lot of competition for any public funding to support schools development, major infrastructure. And I think on behalf of the board, it's just raising that element of how do we actually champion this and secure a good allocation of public funding into this area. It remains challenging. Your previous items, most don't come with through a funding, but certainly stuff I'm seeing with government and many of the board members are, is that ask of do you have a plan? Do you have a commitment? And how closely you can work together? As we'll see this week, there are significant investments that come, and that's built on confidence. So there'll be an announcement with my day job hat on that we are investing another one point five billion into the region. And that's based on connectivity, it's based on the ability of skills and development of communities, but also how that cross working works. And that does count a lot with global partners that we're talking to. Strangely, the other investments coming across this area, and again, talking to business board members, is that confidence that we actually have plans in place and that we understand what's happening in the local economy and how does it connect. So we totally respect the challenges of the local government, but it's also how can we collectively support where we see things like Get Britain Working, that we can champion the cause for a greater level of investment. Whilst that's a plan, I think there's also the element of we would welcome seeing a level of asks and challenge back to the government. They come with unallocated funds, but certainly I get to sit on a Treasury Group as well. And there is a series of other areas that are more compelling in their argument. And I think it's something for, you know, this region to grasp by actually putting stronger, deeper, meaningful proposals forwards. Whether there's funding there or not, I think championing that case is quite critical. So as we come up to a year of the Business Board, I think one of the most critical elements for us has been looking at the economic growth strategy. I think we're on about the sixth, seventh, eighth iteration of that that's been bounced through the board. And I think now the board's been working with offices in a more direct way of how can we collectively shape that report. So first versions of that economic strategy from Lichfield was it could have been anywhere. And I think the version that we're now sharing with everyone is more tailored to the region, the individual authorities, and it complements your own either existing or emerging economic plans. So we want to highlight, one, we're going out for a sounding to partners within the business sectors. As I say, this area's unique. If you look at the industrial strategy, we can probably tick seven, if not all eight of those areas of growth, including those like my own in terms of logistics that underpin some of that. But when they underpin high growth areas and aspects, really don't underplay it. And I think that's a challenge that we're drawing from members that are SMEs, micro businesses, right through to large globals, that the area is unique. We may have landed universal, but there's a lot of work still to be done there.
Ain't landed yet.
And that's what I mean by it's not quite landed. Being positive, I don't want to get drawn into negative. But the whole environment at the moment is having the confidence to invest. And the biggest one then is how we deliver at pace. That shouldn't be ignoring the existing economies. So whilst we've got the industrial strategy, and I think this area has huge strengths, it's how we can bring that together with a clear offer. So we're passing around to leaders now, the final draft, as we see it before it's polished, of the economic growth strategy. I think that's proactive sounding. It gives us a very, very clear baseline and an evidence base that underpins work you'll be doing individually. But it also gives you the value back of businesses that are prepared to engage, support, act as a sounding to whether they're very local or wider strategic approaches that just gives us the slight difference to influence government and actually attract additional funding. And I totally appreciate everybody having been your side of the fence of staring at budgets and the challenging decisions of having viable and signed off business cases. But do not underplay the value the business sector can bring. And at the moment, we're seeing those challenges across the board and across the UK. This area still has a huge advantage. And I just think as the Chair of the Business Board, we very much see that as being underplayed. So the strengths we've got, we've all talked about things like the Oxford Cambridge growth area, again, question marks with the recent changes of is that in a zone that's going to get funding, but actually, how does this area step up and demand the right level of support that would make a difference? And one of the benchmarks I'd use, just with everyone else who got you in the room, is if you gave one percent of the level of funding that some of the northern regions are actually projecting, a hundred million would make a big difference to X, a billion here, that doesn't get you double digit change. If you've got half the level of investment being touted to some of the northern authorities, you would actually see significant economic benefit across the board for this region. So I think it's been a long process to bring forward what I'd call a probably a document that's now in its seventy percent state of, yep, it's good enough. It is giving a bit more identity. It does need underpinning and complementing with your own economic local plans. But it is something the board would welcome your input at a strategic level to, and how we can champion that, that can be a tool to evidence the level of need in what's going to be a very challenging period. And I think, again, this week, you're going to hear an awful lot about big ticket items, but we need to see that underpinned by government commitments as well. And I think the Business Board is keen, very proactive in that, not only in their individual day jobs, but a challenge back to this group to say, how can we maximize that going forward? Thank you.
Comments?
None.
Thank you. I was just going to pick up the point, Jason, about because it's always a challenge for all of us around the when there's no funding, extra funding available, what are the asks of government? But I presume, say, from conversations that we've had before, it's thinking about things like the ability to get government to agree enterprise zones, for example, that give us certain freedoms and other things without the investment. So I'm just wondering, kind of from your perspective, what are the sort of asks that outside of the funding type question that we should be focused on?
So some of the Business Board partners, you've got people there with Defence Aviation, you've got people like ourselves, what we're looking for with government is, there's no longer investment. I do a lot of work with AstraZeneca, and you would see at the moment their positioning, which is super aggressive, but that's simply behind the scenes is an argument about tariff setting. The level of asks, and I'd cite AstraZeneca, they do this very well. So, you know, they have a very strong local debate, and then they have a, you know, probably one of the strongest and most aggressive national debates. And that isn't always financially orientated. And I think that's the benefit of public private work, and we don't exploit, which is where's that extra pound of flesh, whether that's around skills investment, whether it's around new applied designations. We are certainly with my day job hat, we're investing, and it will be announced this week, four billion into Cambridge biomedical campus. But that comes at a really small price. We want sixty million commitment from government to a twenty year ask for a new access route into that campus. It's been talked about forever. But that also is requests around, is there a life science enterprise zone? Will they be more flexible in planning? Will they support the planning authority to actually go faster? So I think that that level of ask, and, you know, again, we do a lot of work with places like Manchester, they have a constant shopping list of investment asks and a really aggressive and productive policy offer as well. And that, again, is something I would encourage here is the diversity of sectors you've got embedded, you know, both in urban and rural areas, it is a unique set of offers. We are not pitching one or two sectors like majority of locations in the UK. So the strengths and depths across all of your authority areas are significant. And I think, again, it's how we, we're a successful area, we could be an absolute high growth area rather than just comfortable. So I think that would be part of the pitch is utilize the assets we've got and be more aggressive with it.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'd just like to thank Jason and the members of the Business Board for, I watched the working through of the Lichfield Consultants Programme and recommendations, and I've seen it reshaped to better address the South Midlands. And I just wanted to put on record the thanks from all the authorities I would hold to the Business Board and you, Jason. Thank you.
For hours about this, about the emerging policy of a government that seems to change every day. But we've been saying that for six years now, haven't we? Doesn't matter what party. Part of the problem, and you mentioned it before, is whatever you think about leaving the European Union, the European Union set its budgets on seven year terms and had the European Structural Fund was set over seven years. And obviously, the replacement for that, and our budgeting periods in this country through the CSR are three years. And the government will absolutely not, even for combined authorities, move that three year budgeting period for any period longer than three years. Three years is the blink of an eye, isn't it? In any capital project, let alone long term strategic, you know, structural change to an economy, or a producer base, or a manufacturing base. And one of the questions I would ask, sort of, poor shit, it's not for you to answer, is how, as a country, but very specifically as an area, two areas, depending on what you think of the English Divolution White Paper, do you get over that in terms of that risk reward, that long term investment, when international companies look abroad to China or America or India, they are literally being persuaded with decades worth of underpinned investment and sort of, where we talk on three year cycles with perhaps, don't worry, you know, we might deliver a railway in the next CSR cycle, you know, it's bizarre. And so what are the things over and above that that we can be doing to give business that certainty around investing in the region, when there's such a structural deficit in the way that this country tries to attract inward investment?
I'll give it a go. I get the joy of working across Europe as well. The French make you every promise under the earth and then implode, which is always good. Germany and Netherlands is probably the benchmark at the moment. One, yes, you're right, from public sector point of view, they can guarantee what they offer you. So if they sign an energy agreement, weirdly, you get energy committed. UK biggest deficit at the moment is, it's hilarious to hear all the AI announcements and data centers you can't plug in for your life. This area still has good energy capacity, but again, it's how you utilize it and understand that. Skills Development UK still leads in that. I'll probably say only second to Germany in terms of efficiency and connectivity. That combined offer, and just ignoring the Devo debate, is how do you actually project that? So it's that offer. So M and S's announcement, they had five regions, including two outside the UK to look at their offer, which, again, a lot of that came down to access to workforce, long term investment, ability to develop workforce where they needed critically the ability for automation and skills. And we've got an up and coming, it's a very thin line in a lot of the data hidden here, that we are getting more people that are coders, that can, more startups around digital, more startups around AI as well as robotics. There's a lot of companies, and they barely show on the data, a lot in MK, a lot in North Northants, very small samples of it. And it's how we position that. I think the bigger development, when it comes to investment, it's the confidence of an area. If you've got clear strategies that you can see coming forward, that you can put your weight behind, it's a lot easier. So coming in cold into somewhere like Cambridge for us, that's quite an easy shopping list. It's not really delivered on twenty years of growth proposals. So it's easy to sit in a room and actually back that argument of, yeah, it's only sixty million quid for an access road, but it's never been publicly funded. And I think that's, yeah, I still turn to somewhere like Manchester in the UK stands out because if you turn up with a pound, they've got a project for a pound. If you turn up with a billion quid, they will sit there and present you a billion pound offer. Very refined, yeah, and precise.
I think part of the problem, Manchester, problem, not problem, is that they have a lot of access to things we don't ask. So a housing company will turn up and say, we've got a twenty million pound gap in our ability to be able to deliver or worry about the capital on this. So at the moment, house builders cannot get loans, and they cannot get loans because government gilts and bonds are at five and a half percent in the market with a yield over twenty years that's absolutely secure. And even though housing yield is at the highest it's ever been, at four and a half percent, that's still nearly a whole percentage point lower, with added risk of actually delivering it, Manchester are using their pension fund to bridge the gap. We can't do that, and no one else has got the power to be able to do that. And so that, some of the things about Manchester is now, I think, at a point where London was maybe twenty, fifteen, twenty years ago, where it is an economy on its own and has the ability to do things that nowhere else in the country has. That doesn't mean we shouldn't aspire to that. But I think it's a completely different market and a completely different world in terms of economic output and ability to be able to make decisions. Because Andy Burnham has three times the powers that his neighboring mayor does in Steve Rotherham, and that's just the world we live in. My other question would be around, we've mentioned Oxford and Cambridge a lot of times, I'll come to it in a second, John. I think all of us will have received the letter now from Council Leffin around the government's decision to withdraw funding for England's economic heartland as a sub national transport body. But I think the future of that body is quite clearly, if I was to read the runes about government policy, would be to bring some sort of democratic oversight to the Oxford Cambridge region, particularly around the sub cluster board that is driven predominantly at the moment by Oxford and Cambridge and academic institutions, and has very little political oversight about the direction of that. It is how you fit in for some economic subregions into that and how this strategy links into the ARC strategy as well. And so what conversations can we have? I mean, it's quite clear who you have a conversation with Cambridge and Peterborough with, isn't it? Because there is a mayor in Cambridge and Peterborough. It's quite clear that we work together, whether it's one region or two regions. Oxfordshire is quite different. So how helpful would it be to have that forum over the four to bring together, if we do end up with four, four combined authority areas, how you would bring that together as a single structure, or in some sort of single structure to drive that economic growth? Because the difference between the border of bits of central Bedfordshire and Cambridgeshire are non existent, and the bits of the borders between Milton Keynes and Northamptonshire are non existent. But the further you get away from some of those borders, the more different those places become. So it's how we link that sort of thing together and what sort of structure would be best.
Don't necessarily agree with you in Cambridge. It's the most complex, best example of how not to put public sector together, which makes it an investor nightmare. I think the OX can be is really understanding what the government's I think the OX CAM bit is really understanding where the government's serious, because we've been here. So is it, yeah, the question mark comes out, is it worth the effort? Flipping it from a business perspective, we don't see the political boundaries. The sectors really define themselves, that there is a South Midlands, however you cut it, cluster there to be gained. And that does have, as I say, seven primary sectors that are already good growth, they're not high growth. And I think it's how you maximise that power, which does dwarf places like Manchester and the region. So what they still lack is that depth. They're desperate to get into life science. They're desperate, desperate to get into defence industry. They don't have that DNA. And I think it's playing off those strengths that, yeah, it doesn't cost anything. Public sector doesn't have to fund it. It's your ability to unlock and partner that opportunity. And I think that's the clever challenge to come, which I think using this strategy as a stepping stone to go, right, take the mantle on of, we can either be dictated to of what OXCAM could be, or you centre it around this part of the world. Um, you've certainly got the business clusters and the right caliber of businesses at every level to do that. Um, and no disrespect to Universal, but if that's not a cluster, that's a significant investment. However, broader impact you've got is we have world class businesses. Um, and that's what the Business Board is seeing is how do you harness that and use that as your counter to the Manchester office? And that, yeah, you've got to play to the geographies and this geography is, yeah, has a huge strength that is still underutilised.
Thank you, Jason. So we've talked about Manchester, we've talked about the region as a whole. Um, but as a humble councillor, I'm just going to ask you a question about what councillors can do to uh help attract business. Now, I'll talk about only my own council. I, I, I know a lot about Milton Keynes, actually, that it's a very pro-growth area. But central beds councillors are often, more often than not, the opposite of that. Um, I mean, to give you one example, um, we have many councillors who run around saying, we want more sustainability, we want to generate own electricity, we want to improve the environment, et cetera, et cetera. Brilliant. A solar farm, a planning application for a solar farm arrives on an old tip, Robra tip, you may know about it. I mean, could you think of a better place to put a solar farm on an old waste tip? And then our own development management committee says, it's absolutely terrible idea. What about the birds? And turns it down. Overturned appeal, obviously, daft decision by the committee. However, clearly as a council, we didn't help at that point. We said to the business, you aren't welcome here. And they had to go to a planning inspector to get permission. Now, I guess what I'm looking for, it's almost like a, a, a question, feel free not to answer, uh, but what do, do you get a sense of all the businesses are picking up on this and are looking at the area and saying, well, look, that authority area, if I apply for a warehouse or a business or an X, Y and Z in authority X, I can see, more likely than not, it's going to be a lot of hassle and I've got a choice. I could go to Milton Keynes instead. So I'll go to Milton Keynes instead because I know that the leader and others are very pro-business and pro-growth. Does that percolate up to the business or the businesses you represent? And uh, if, if it does, does not, can you give us some advice, certainly for me as a councillor, I love a councillor, about how we might make our areas more attractive to businesses if that, if that is an issue that's percolating upwards?
So authorities that are perceived to be enablers are the most attractive. Um, I won't speak for any of the other Business Board members. There is a debate we have around, um, who's more alive to certain sectors, who's more progressive. Uh, and these days that's changed from being highly appealing, that if you're in aviation, yes, you understand your own cluster better than the authority, but it's less about that. It's more the ability to supply, certainly these days, clarity around access to energy, workforces, skill support. The principal answer is those authorities that fit the box of being an enabler. That they work proactively will remove barriers. Um, many of you already are in this room. Um, I hate to do this in public, but you know, West Northants were quite key in us winning against other areas, M and S, and that was about transparency of a planning system, the way the offices engaged. Um, you, sorry, Andrew, planners are seen as a living nightmare, but that was highly enabling in that context. Um, and it gave a level of confidence. We were able to bring that client in privately and sit, which is high risk and sit with both offices and members. And, you know, business is very alive to the fact you have local challenges, but it's the consistency of an area. Uh, frankly, from a prologist's point of view, there's at least two areas we wouldn't, I would uh, pull us back from investing in. So within the OXCAM, I would still say somewhere like Bucks is a question mark area. First, if you want to go fast, you want to invest deep, you wouldn't go into Bucks. And that's a big challenge, yet you would go into Milton Keynes two millimetres away. And I think that is a critical bit for members is, you'll always get bogged down in the statutory stuff. But it's the behaviour and how you present is the killer. So it's quite straightforward, but things like this economic strategy, it's also having the evidence that starts conversation. Super. Martin and Graham?
Just what I'm hearing makes a very good, strong case for one combined authority for a song, a song.
Not going to happen against Milton Keynes's applied policy and also now actually against the English Devolution White Paper legislation. Um, but that's why I am, I've got a letter from a minister if you want it, Jason. Um, ve- very clear around, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. And I think Jason's made that point in one sense, it doesn't matter whether it's one in this area or two. The point is, is that there are overlapping sectors and regardless of it's one or two or four, it's absolutely incumbent. We work, we work together across, uh, across, across that to make sure that we, we have some sort of open gate or, or channel to, to get, to get that investment and because it doesn't really matter if inward investment is going to happen in Dean's Hanger. But because it's already across a regional boundary, it's already across, it's already across a council boundary and then it's already across, you know, a physical boundary. But actually, if you live in Stony Trafford, you don't really care. It's not that far away. So it, it's getting too hung up on, on sort of the political, the political ultimately authority boundaries is not the question, I think, that is around the economic strategy and the overall output of the economic strategy. Um, and the, the government are very clear about that, I think, because the government are also moving the units towards other things like co-terminals with ICBs, at least co-terminals with ICBs, et cetera, et cetera. So that it's, it's important. I don't think we don't get bogged down in that. Graham?
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. Thanks, Jason, for the update on the economic strategy. Certainly, we welcome the, the South Midlands economic strategy. I think you're absolutely right. It needs to chime with our local strategies and I'm absolutely confident that it will. Uh, but as I mentioned earlier, North Northamptonshire has its economic strategy, which we were promoting up at UK Reef. And as you say, we're keen to engage, uh, as others are, of course, with, with the industry and various different sectors to see how we can uh promote uh the right kind of growth in North Northamptonshire. And, and you're right, I agree that we are stronger as a collective. Uh, we've got more to offer. Our, our asks can be more uh aligned uh and, and larger, but ultimately, we've got more to give back to, to central government as a result of, of receiving that funding or that support, that, with that enablement. A few things have been mentioned, which I think we definitely need to bear in mind when we're developing our strategy, is that infrastructure piece, which you mentioned, Jason, and also Chair, you've mentioned. Uh, clearly, there's a number of different strategies and plans that need to link in with the, with the economic development strategy and join those dots. We've heard mention of the local plan, obviously, local plans, uh, obviously, but also energy, as you say, Jason, and the importance of, of linking it in with our local energy uh assessments and also the regional energy assessments. Water, uh, sewage disposal is another one. There's an awful lot of dots to be joined still, which we, we need to make happen if we're to have the strategy be successful. Because as you say, it's, it's easy to, to talk a big vision. It's much harder to join the dots and then, then enable that big vision. So certainly on board to do that. And the stakeholder engagement you mentioned is, is hugely important. We very much welcome your help and the help of the board to do that. So thank you. Uh, and our officers, and I'm sure others are as well, other, our officers are very, officers are very keen to, to tap into our own uh, networks and stakeholders to make sure that their voice is also heard through, through the strategy. So thank you. We look forward to bringing it forward with you.
Any more? Jason? One pointer. Um, just on water and energy, the biggest barrier, doesn't matter how much is announced this week for Cambridge. Um, we've still got a wonderful decision with the government that supported and cleared the DCO for Waste Disposal Management, three hundred and something million, and then two seconds later, a separate department pulled the plug on it. Um, that's going to be the killer for four of the biggest research campuses. And that's part of the debate. We're going down to London with this week, which is, it's lovely to announce these multi-billion investments, but ours are all caveated these days on access not to skills, not to getting through planning. It simply proves that you've got access to basic utilities. Um, and if you look at the companies that are behind some of those bigger investments, you know, it is disappointing in this part of the world. It would be a new expansion in, which is the life science manufacturing. There are serious considerations by us and many of our partners to look right across this part of the world. And the key to that will be power, water. Um, and at the moment, Cambridge is an example, you know, significant funders are holding this week purely on that and Trump's visit. But beyond that, we'll see what comes with it. It's worth just, again, certainly for areas like Milton Keynes, that potential of advanced manufacturing is far more significant that's been played. So if you can, local plans tend not to get into the, they're due to death on highways. There's barely a mention about power and water. So.
Thank you. I think that is noted. Um, good. Uh, that concludes all the business to be transacted. Uh, the date of the next meeting is the twenty fifth of November, twenty twenty five. Uh, the meeting is closed at one minute past eleven.